Good evening, 101.
Good evening.
Happy New Year to everybody. Before I call this meeting or order, I'd like to officially introduce our new County Council Professor, Tasha Brown McGreen. Welcome to the team. And I call to order County Council meeting for two big gatherings for a team. The meeting is being held in the location. Does anyone stand in agreement standing for the question?
Let us pray. Our dear county helpfully Father, we do thank you for bringing us to be together once again for this first County Council meeting of the year. We just thank you for all your many blessings and we and as being this meeting, we invite your presence and we ask that you lead and guide us. We ask that you that 2025 be a wonderful year for this county, our local government, state government, and national government. Help us to keep you first in all that we do. And as we approach the agenda that is set before us tonight, if you would please give us wisdom, understanding, clarity of mind to be able to make decisions that are pleasing in your sight. Bless you always remember the men and women who are serving our country in uniform, especially those that are serving in arms ways. Let them know they are not forgotten. Please in all blessings we thank and ask in your precious name. Amen.
I pray to the leaders to the glory of the United States of America and to the Republic which has sent us one mission under your honor and in this world, where there is justice for all.
Right to getting into the agenda, the rest of business we need to conduct. The offices, the office of chair and vice chair now taken. The floor is now open for nominations. This is chairman. I would like to. Jim, okay. This is chairman. Scott. Any other nomination? Any nomination? All in favor? Nomination is now open for vice chair. Any other nomination?
It's field and this is chair motion. My application. We cannot hear. Okay, you're talking to yourself and these people are complaining because they don't hear what you're saying. Okay, so say would you please?
Everybody make sure your mic's on.
Yes, thank you very much.
All in favor? All in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
We have a motion to approve the agenda. The move is properly seconded to approve the agenda. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Have a motion to approve our minutes from our meeting to be some attempt. Some more second. The move is properly seconded that we approve our minutes will be some attempt. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Next item on the agenda is resoning matter, RZ 2422. Prior to County Council taking action, I'll definitely have a public here. RZ 2422, this room.
It was me just to say to you that it appears that the computer has started itself without being asked. I did not see it in the statement. This evening we have RZ 2422 of 425 Myrtle Beach Highway. The applicant is JT Stevenson, Peachtree Roth LLC. There is a representative on behalf of the request. Here in the audience today. This is a request to rezone approximately 37 acres from Light Industrial Warehouse to Residential 6 in the hopes of doing approximately 111 unit single family residential development. This is the area in question. It has direct frontage on Myrtle Beach Highway and it has a direct connection to Wellington Road, which is part of the Sherwood Forest subdivision. Property today is currently heavily wooded. If it is successfully zoned and consequently developed, it will be timber. We would work with the applicants through that process to help preserve buckering where it makes sense since mature trees are certainly preferable to planting new ones. Today, this property is owned by Industrial Warehouse. Doing some research, we actually found that it's been this zoning designation since at least 1992. We don't have any records prior to that, but we do know that the Sherwood Forest development was originally conceived of in the mid 1950s when development started. When we look at rezoning request, we look at what the comprehensive land use plan says. In this case, it is a suburban development planning area. And the objective of this planning area is to scrutinize the managing existing pattern of development and to foster a potential mix of uses for form and design and more focus. The request for R6 zoning in this area, given the existing pattern of development to the north and to the west for residential zoning and uses is consistent with 2040 plans. For point of reference, this is a preliminary sketch plan of what the developers are thinking that they can do in here. There is some retention to the development. One of the reasons that the Sherwood Forest development was halted in the late 1950s, early 1960s was because it was served by an onsite sewage lagoon and this part of the property did not lend itself well for any onsite septic systems. And so they had abandoned that development project. As we discussed previously, in order for this development plan to work or any sort of development in R6, we, they, developers will need to obtain an access to city sewer services. That discussion is ongoing. My understanding is that the city is open to it, but it will necessitate the relocation of a sewer, uh, force lane as well as potential upgrades to lift stations. So that is something that will have to be worked out as part of the development process moving forward. Just to put this into perspective, this is the north half of the Sherwood Forest development. This is what was planned in the early 1950s. It is laid out very comparably to what they originally proposed. And then this is the southern part of the property. This is what was going to be developed if they had not run into sewer issues. And everything you see highlighted on that green on the aerial photograph actually encompasses that 1950s development plan for Sherwood Forest. This represents a portion of that development area that did not get constructed in the 1950s. And it does include the area proposed for rezoning. And to put it in further perspective, this development area as proposed for rezoning today actually encompasses what you see highlighted in that 1950 Sherwood Forest plan. Planning physician did recommend approval of this request. We do believe that R6 zoning is supported by the 2040 plan and the existing subdivision development proximity for this forest request for residential development. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions, absolutely. Okay, thank you. And now the chair, the public hearing is open. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this rezoning request, please proceed to the microphone and please state your name for the rep.
Good evening, Chairman McKay and members of something kind of council. I am Eugene Bacon, former chairman of something county council. Served on council for 20 years. I'm standing here to be opposed to this development. And the reason why is because it seems like developers don't want to learn a lesson from what problems we are having when we put a development in an area without access to retail stores. So what we have on bypass was 76. We have. Okay. Well, I must be good. Okay. 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 All right. Can you hear me? So give me more time because, but like I said, on 76, we built developments across their residential housing. But according to the last planning director, this was a poorly planned subdivision of housing area because it not access to retail stores. As a result of that, the residents in that area will cross four lanes of road, highway road, to get to a retail store on the other side. Unfortunately, during that time, a few people have been killed crossing that highway. So now we're going to build another development with no access to retail store. There's no sidewalks on Myrtle Beach Highway. So we're increasing traffic of people trying to walk up and down the highway to get to retail stores. Now, and what they're trying to do in a 37 point some acre area, which I rounded off 38 acres, 1/4 of that is going to be used for roads. So now you only got 28 acres. So now you're going to have lot sizes of 1/4 acre, right? This is all. You don't have any recreational facilities. Where's the parks? Where's the playground for the kids? We don't have that. That's another area. So I'm saying to you that this area is not appropriate for high density housing. And I'm also afraid that those housing that there is are going to be low value housing, which could probably be more low income people. And when you have low income people in the community, let's be clear, you're going to have high cost. So I'm strongly opposed to this and I hope that you would take into consideration the lessons that we have learned from doing this in the past and those people that have crossed that highway and have given their life to cross it. I am a certified addictions counselor for many years and I know that if a person want to smoke, they're going to walk across that highway. If a person want to smoke in this area, they're going to walk down Myrtle Beach Highway to a store. And that dollar general don't sell alcohol, person want to drink. So I'm asking you that this is poorly planned because it has no access to retail facility. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Bacon. Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Sandra Ruff and I am in the Sherwood Forest community. And my street is Wellington Road. Now we've got this road, we bought the house because it was a dead end. We really liked that. Nice trees, everything was perfect. Now it looks like on the map that it's going to be a thoroughway. So it's going to go down Pipe Road, Wellington, and into the community. So all that is going to go across my house. And I'm really concerned about the, the traffic, accidents, speeding. We already have speeding problem, but it's more speeding and just the road itself is bothering me. That's all. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Ruff. Anyone wishing to speak for this rezoning request?
Hello, my name is John Davis and I also live on Wellington Road also. In fact, I'm at the very end of Wellington Road. Just to paraphrase what my neighbor said, now we're talking about a high volume of traffic. We're talking about 100 something houses. And the assets come from Myrtle Beach Highway to Wellington Road. That's a whole lot of traffic. Talk about crime. We're not going to talk about that. So far, thank God, on Wellington Road, we don't have any problems. A little bump here and there, but we don't have any problems. Most of our neighbors be talk to each other. But now you almost like squeezing us into a can of sardines. That's what you're doing. Just a whole lot of problems I see coming. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Bacon. Anyone else wishing to speak, council? Public Councilor Club, pleasure of council.
They don't want to counter, you know, at least give some information.
I'm making a motion for second reading.
I represent one of the developers. I mean, we just hope this would come in.
Please state your neighborhood.
Tony Newton. I mean, we just have, hopefully this will be a community, we're building a neighborhood, you know, and it should be a, hopefully it would be an asset to the community instead of a, you know. Do you have any questions? I can't hear, I'm sorry. I've just been waiting. Getting your jury.
Um, my question is, have you spoke with the residents in all of them in Sherwood? Or want another resolution for the road that they're concerned about? Have you gotten them at all?
No, we, I mean, that's just a preliminary. So we, you know, we had to see if it would go through first and then we should, you know, take that into account, you know.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I understand the question. My new colleague asked the developer because it was the same question that I was going to ask. And I would encourage you moving forward to definitely have a conversation with the residents in that area because under its present form, it's not something that I will work for. I am a community representative and I believe in developers connecting with the community and working out the details. And even in a preliminary format, that conversation should take place. So for that reason, I will not be able to support.
And I just wanted to, and thank you for coming forth. I just wanted to also reiterate, I can tell that from your statement that you don't want to be invasive. Yes. But then, of course, the concerns about the density, you know, that means that there's a lot of homes coming into an area that, that's pretty sparse right now. And then also the concerns about commercial development not being able to have stores to get to and, you know, the ingress and egress, you know, in and out of getting from Myrtle Beach Highway, Wellington, and the safety issues and things like that, you know, as we, maybe you can have some answers for us.
We're hoping that, that's from 378, the easier path of the project would be on Lake City Highway into it, you know, it would be harder to turn back, go down the road, come into Wellington. It was our thought, you know. Hopefully the traffic pattern would be in the front. Like I said, it would be a probably a phase development, you know, or of the front phase when people are, people have it, you know, so if it was developed up front, you know, it would probably get used to coming in and out into town from that side. But that would probably be an advantage.
Is this project dependent on tying into Wellington?
Well, that would, yeah, you know, so that's.
There is a fire access remoteness issue that comes into play when you're over 30 lots. You have to have two accesses into subdivision or one fire access that is a remote fire access. Because of the amount of frontage they have on Myrtle Beach Highway and the depth of the property, they will not by fire code be able to put both of those accesses on Myrtle Beach Highway and need fire code.
But they can, they can block it off.
Fire access.
And they can gate it. They can gate it. Yeah, we've got Wellington, that way you won't have that true traffic.
There are ways to address that, that potential through traffic.
Yeah, I would definitely be opposed if you're going to access.
Right.
It's too long and you have, so just don't, take care of the resident issue up there.
And the other thing that I wanted to put out, our information doesn't have the outline of, of the various lots and that was a good, that was a good visual. Would you be willing to sacrifice some lot spaces? You know, I've seen developments where they're, they have like a community building where there are, you know, like resources and, you know, like in a little park area within the development. Just a thought, you don't have to answer it, but if you could, you know, consider that model as well, you know, it is a concern for the residents of the area.
Yeah, I think that's, but hopefully like I said, if it is blocked off, it could be self sustained, you know, that's a reality. We'd have to develop it and bring it back.
You have to give us something that we can approve.
I've got a quick question. What's, from there, what size houses are you talking about putting in there?
That's a quarter, they're probably.
Three bedroom?
Yeah.
Three bedroom. They have what 1,200, 1,500 square feet?
Yeah, probably on that line.
Sidewalks?
They know it well that, is that a county man? They can only put it on one side.
This is in the county and the county does not require sidewalks.
But I'm glad the sewer water coast is to be a city, so the.
Those side will not be developed as a city project. They will be offered city sewer services with outer city rate.
Oh. I was going to add a little extra on that one.
But this development is not contiguous to the city, so it cannot be.
Well, it can't be R6 if it's not, if the city doesn't bring sewage in there.
It can be R6 if it needs water.
Water, but you got to, lots aren't big enough to support a second type of.
There's sewer already on site. What's the average retail price of a home that you're going to build? Well, I'm not the builder, so lots with, normally in the.
Up to 200.
Up to 200.
Up to 200?
Yes. I mean, ultimately with lot development, the price of it nowadays is a starting point on like, on a new home.
And the square footage is going to be 1,200 to 1,500 square feet?
I can't promise that. You'll see where it's going to have to be enough to sell in 245.
And then my last is, they could put a gate. All right. At Wellington, where they don't get through traffic.
Yeah, that may be.
You got, you have a gate and if there's a fire, the fire truck could just knock the gate down.
We do a lot of communities and that is, we'll put gravel between that off and then it would be access in and outside.
Point of, point of clarification on the sewer and water service. A developer prior to being bringing the rezoning action forward has actually been in conversation with the city and city public services about sewer being required to this property with the understanding that it was not annexed in, but they would be provided those services at the developer's expense of doing the work that needs to be done to get to it and with outer city rates. So normally we do not see this scenario happening in county developments because city sewers know we're in proximity to the development. In this instance, it actually happens to be a force main and lift stations that were put in by the city that got done to deal with the sewage lagoon issue at the original Sherwood Forest as well as that Irish Little Home Park, but it is not inside the city.
Sherwood bars, city limits.
No services in accounts.
But they are utilizing city sewer.
Yes, sir. So none of those properties are on a septic system. They are all on public sewer. So you are correct. Usually we would not have city sewer services available. This is a slightly unique situation.
I make a motion to approve second reading. There's a room for. We have a motion to approve second reading. All in favor? Please say aye. All those?
All those.
Well, I didn't hear any resolution as far as getting the developer and their residents together to, you know, I just hate to just for a blank, you know, deny him, but you know, if he has the opportunity to try to satisfy those concerns.
If we pass second reading tonight, it's going to move forward. He's not going to have a chance with third reading. So.
Mr. Chairman, I'm in agreement with my colleague. I definitely think there needs to be a conversation with the community. I mean, we're up here discussing the pros and cons of it and, and that's a good thing to do. It's not a bad thing to do. But I think the real conversation needs to be had with people who've made long-term investments in property and houses and how that's going to affect them. And I think this developer needs to have that conversation with them. And if they can iron something out, then we come back.
That's, I agree. All I'm saying is if we vote on the motion that's on the floor, either way it goes, you're not going to have that. So if someone makes a motion to defer it, so that conversation can take place.
Exactly. Exactly. I would support that.
Yeah. Well, I'm looking to defer.
I second.
The only thing I would say is, you know, why I supported it is because light industrial is worse for the neighborhood. I mean, if you want to look at Wellington, I've been to Wellington many times, calls. So just like, no, it's the only way it is now. You have no say so in that Wellington street.
And you could put another business, which is right beside.
And you have, they just like, that's, that's actually better than only for the residents. I think that's why, I'm going to give you first.
Will that be counted, county?
Sorry, sorry, sorry. So it's not like industrial, it'd just be better for the residents and the neighborhood, etc.
But that's all the reason why it would be good for the community to discuss it with the developer. You know, he might be able to do a community, a common place where people can gather and establish a little park for them and then consider the density, you know, all the different little concerns that the residents have. So I mean, of course, yes, light industrial, they wouldn't want that, but it, you know, it can happen. But then he is, he does have a proposal and a plan, so you know.
If it was passed second reading tonight, still.
This is his first example right now. Then we can first three, that's what we're going to do. I'll be, I'll be with the first three.
You know, haste makes waste.
My initial thoughts on this when I first saw it was, well, I've always heard all the developments going on the other side of town. We don't get any development on this side of town. But now we've got a chance to have some development.
side of town, but now we've got a chance to have some development, retail will follow residential development, nobody's gonna go out there and build something without your customer base there, but once you get the customer base here, you do pick up some retail, that's how that works.
We got a motion on the floor to.
To defer.
You got anything else to say?
You have a motion to defer?
I'm paying a motion to defer, please say aye.
Aye.
So this is deferred until the contractor, owner can come to some kind of solution with the residents. Will it be, will it be another public hearing or what?
Yeah, and, and, and just for clarification, Mr. Chairman, who would initiate that meeting?
I don't know.
Yes, if they have to, properly have.
Would you like this deferred indefinitely until we hear back from the developer on the meeting, or do you want it to jump out to the next meeting for consideration of second reading?
I put a next to. In the chance, I would do it definitely. Two weeks taller.
Yeah, and, and, okay, okay, you know, there's something about it that I don't like. We can, in this body, we have done it before, pulled the two parties together, you know, somebody needs to coordinate it, even if we bring it here in this building, for the community and the developer to just sit down and have a conversation. We've done that before.
I'll propose it.
You know, and these allow that to happen.
That's why we defer.
No, but we, yeah, we deferred it, but we are not given that much support either.
So.
It's deferred, so you're gonna, you're gonna coordinate a.
Yeah, I can do that, I can, you know. With the applicants, we can report the information.
Let us know when.
And then they can bring the report back to us and then we can make a, be able to make a better decision, and it is in this, regardless district.
It's two weeks from now?
Um, is that, is that sufficient enough time for you to meet?
Yeah, I can tell the residents, I wanna see if they wanna move forward with development or, you know.
Mr. Chairman, is there a way to get a, a meeting? We hope we can provide the contact information for the developer and I believe that there is sign and information from the, the meeting sign that will have contact information for concerned residents as well as.
Thank you, thank you.
Order number twenty four ten fourteen, second reading.
Mr. Chairmembers of council, you have a public hearing prior to second reading on Project White Palmetto. You had first reading on title only, and you now have before you the actual, three hundred thousand tax agreement. This is sixteen page document with exhibits, but if you go to exhibit D, the third paragraph, it's all boiled down in that paragraph. It says, "The amount of the net fee of the taxpayer is based on the assumption that the client will generate two hundred megawatts of alternating current final output and will pay four thousand five hundred dollars per megawatt final output." That is just the agreement right there, not one of the seven.
That's approximately nine hundred thousand dollars.
That's the assumption that it will generate two hundred thousand, uh, two hundred megawatts per power, but the net fee of payment will be whatever it generates. If it generates less, be four thousand five hundred dollars per megawatt, generates more, be four thousand five hundred dollars per megawatt.
And if no minimum, if they have to meet.
Not the way through. As an assumption, it's gonna generate two hundred megawatts.
I'd probably see some kind of no on myself, but I don't feel willing to know that, but I have to pay that.
They're gonna play the board.
Yeah.
It'll work out. We have a public hearing, if anyone wishes to speak for or against, this order number twenty four ten fourteen. Please proceed to the floor, let's make a name.
See, see what the right distance is for me. Looks like about right there. Counsel, thank you for your time and your thoughtful consideration. My name is Marshall Cooper. I'm here on, that's my walk-in music, I'm, I'm here on behalf of the developer, Trio Clean Energy, we're based in Austin, Texas. This is gonna be our first project in South Carolina, so we're really excited about it. We want this to be a model for our own community, for being a good neighbor, for showing on that we are worthy of the trust that you placed in us with this agreement and, and by providing your support to the city and this project. I can certainly answer questions. I brought a statement with your approval, I brought a statement from the executive director of the community center out there that this agreement will support, and I, with its permission, I'd like to read it into the record. I always made it on print, she had a surprise birthday party to go to, and she wasn't able to attend. She, you know, it's me and I can get it to the clerk, so it can be part of the record. This is from Gwendolyn Hayward, calling Ms. Gwynn as I know her. She's the center leader of the Remberg Raffin Creek Community Center. It says, "Dear Sumter County Council, I had the opportunity to meet the Trio Clean Energy Team during their open house on November thirteenth. It was encouraging to hear their plans for our community. They took the time to thoroughly address everyone's questions, demonstrating their dedication to making the community comfortable with the development. I'm particularly excited about the potential two hundred thousand dollars donation to the community center, which could help us in either renovating our space or purchasing brand-new equipment for the facility. This donation will help us continue to serve as a valuable resource for Sumter County's youth and elders promoting health, wellness, and neighbor engagement. I am fully supportive of this project and look forward to continuing our collaboration. Thank you for your time."
Thank you.
If there's anything, I'm happy to ask, ask, answer questions.
Mr. Washington. No questions, or just comment?
Yeah.
Yeah, you're good.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah, Mr. Washington.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So just to provide the ten thousand's worth with you, I appreciate Ms. Hayward's comments, and she's partially accurate. We have negotiated a deal with the company for a solar project in the district. The company has donated two hundred thousand dollars for the community, but that money will be used, jumpstart money for a gymnasium at the Raffin Creek Community Center, which would be adjacent to the community center. As you know, there is a twenty-five mile distance from Remberg to the nearest public gymnasium. There is no gymnasium in that area, and so the donation will go toward a gymnasium for the rural area for seniors to come in and exercise or do yoga or, like Ms. Brenda Williams and Ms. Liz Gilgor like to do the electric slide, and for kids to come in and play volleyball or games or basketball and so forth. So just that slight correction. And I would also say that the way this company has approached our community and this project is the way that I like to see companies approach us. They were engaging, they came into the community and met with the residents, which is the right way to do it, and so I wanna commend them for that, and the folks in District One can look forward to a gymnasium in the rural area, and we are in discussions now about how to, how to make the gymnasium a reality sooner than later. So thank you very much for being here tonight. Mr. Chairman, thanks for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Washington. It was a pleasure, counsel. Move for, is it second reading? Second, second reading.
Second?
Yeah, second. Okay, we have a motion on the second to approve second reading. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Second reading approved. Resolution number twenty five oh one.
Mr. Chairman, resolution twenty five oh one and first reading are order twenty five one zero one six, concerning the same project, project hearing. Purpose of the resolution is to identify project hearing as a project in the Economic Development Act, and then also first reading, much later to do that, I'm gonna explain all of it now. What you have is title only, uh, an order authorizing a little tax agreement, but we don't have the whole.
Wait. With approval, resolution?
Second.
And will be probably second that we approve resolution number twenty five oh one. During, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Resolution twenty five oh one is passed. First reading, the first, first reading.
Second.
And will be probably second that we have first reading entitled only, order twenty five ten sixteen, in further discussion. During, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Order is passed. Order twenty five ten seventeen, first reading.
Mr. Chairman and the council, this piece of property off of Evo Drive, one point one nine eight, and it joins a facility, the owner of the facility would like to acquire that little piece of property. If you can put up the, the pictures provided, they're, they're in council's packets, yes, it shows the drains, that, that property was acquired by a county from Black River, that cooperative some years ago, as the drainage system has served that purpose. And I've been in touch with Alphatimes, who's former director, and he provided some information showing how the water drains. The developer is going to use that property as the stormwater drain, they just need it so they can beat setbacks for expansion of the facility. The, some kind of assessment, hearing the property value of five hundred dollars, and purchase price is, and five thousand dollars, five thousand dollars acres, one point one nine eight, so about five thousand, five one four one nine, that gives you your purchase price. And we're gonna retain the drainage, soon as this goes through and we need the property to the developer, we're gonna retain the drainage, and our kinders will be involved and continue to drain the property, if you look in the packets, you can see how it drains the property. That's one of the points of negotiation in the contract.
Move approval, first reading?
Second.
And will be probably second, we have first reading, order twenty five ten seventeen, in further discussion. Here in, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Order twenty four ten fifteen, second reading. And after, uh, public hearing, we have a third reading on January twentieth.
This is the, uh, piece of property out called three seventy eight, the carbon transportation needs in order to improve the debt, cost roads, the change has got, prevent someone from crossing three seventy eight without turning left or right, and they, in order to make that U-turn, they need a little bit of property to throw the fire station, that 's on the fire station. So they've offered fifteen thousand two hundred dollars for it, one thousand two hundred eighty square feet, pretty good price, and it's not gonna impact the function of the fire station, and the money will go to, um, improve the real property, which is a dead property.
Move second reading, that was second. And move to probably second that we have second reading, order twenty four ten fifteen, in further discussion. Here in, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Time to move the attendance. We did have a special meeting, county council, with a, where we went into executive session to discuss two contractual economic development matters, the information, no action was taken. Next item, any reports on county council members on other meetings?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Washington.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, let me just start by thanking the chairman and other members of council, including the county administrator, for working with District One and myself on securing four point three acres of the Delane Elementary School property for a community center. The public should know that the ink is dry on the memorandum of understanding. The center was on the penny for progress, so the funding will be available, and so there will be a new center for the Wedgefield community on the site of the Delane Elementary School, and I wanna thank Ms. Gilgor, who is here tonight, Mr. Roland Robinson, who's here tonight, Mr. Gene Bateman, who's here tonight, I think that's all my Wedgefield folks, that's it, for, and Ms. Catherine Washington, for staying in the south to get this done. It did take us some time to get the MOU like it needed to be, but it has now been signed, and on March the eighth, we will hold a, a community cookout on the property. The school district representatives will be there, school board chairman, superintendent, vice chairman, probably some members of council, and hopefully the chairman will be there to actually set foot on the property, look at it, and talk about the new community center. As you know, the current center is across from the school in a manufactured facility and has been there for some, Mr. Administrator, twenty years or something?
At least tw- twenty-five.
At least twenty-five years, and so this community will be receiving a new community center. I'm very proud of that and I'm very happy for the Wedgefield community, so I wanna thank the members of council for their help and support in that regard, and I look forward to seeing all of you on March eighth at one o'clock, it will be from one, uh, one to three. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Washington. Anyone else? Next item on the attendance, look at the reports, all of these reports are in our package, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so it's gonna need to go through one by one. County administrator report.
Mr. Chairman, council member, good evening. You may have noticed when you came in that you had some documents at your seat, I wanted to make sure that you had these in hand. This is the copy of the external audit that was done by Malvin Jenkins, we've been discussing it now for a couple of months, this was completed by the end of the year. We had requests from council of Washington, we try to get this in your hands as soon as possible. We have them scheduled to come to council at our next meeting, that would be on the twenty eighth, yes, twenty eighth. They will come and do a formal presentation on this information, but we wanted to get it in your hands, asking that if you will, take this opportunity, we've got almost two weeks to review this, if you have any questions or concerns, if you'll let staff know, I'll ask you to send it to our clerk, Sterling, so that we can have an opportunity, if it's a question the staff can answer and be prepared to answer on that Tuesday, we'll do that. If it's something that the auditors need to address, we'll give them a couple of days to prepare for that answer, so if you would please, I'll get that, that would be that Thursday, prior to that council meeting, get that request. This will also help us in determining how much time we need to allow for this meeting. Right now, we're checking a thirty-minute meeting, cover the highlights of the audit, but if there are a lot of questions, then we can certainly pack up and address, and as a failsafe, if you hear something that night, if you have questions, we're more than happy to bring the team back together and get you the answers. As, as you can see, there's a couple of long documents there, rather challenging to read, but the information's there, if you have any questions, please reach out, because we'll have to address it.
Thank you, Ms. Gwynn. Coming out to the public comment portion of our agenda, citizens design, speak, doing public comment.
citizens design, speaking of public comment, ministers of thirty minutes. Comments to be made, to the chairman. If you have any questions, they will be answered after the meeting. Public comment is now open. Anyone wishing to speak to it? Council, please proceed to the podium. State your name directly.
Good evening, council. Mr. Chairman, I'm Dr. Alexandra Bateman. Uh, I would just like to add something about the Myrtle Beach Highway, uh, project, since there won't be another public hearing. Ms. Bateman, thank you so much for voicing those concerns, and I know that I'm not the only person confused. Um, in regards to the actual Myrtle Beach Highway, please know that is a very dangerous highway. Weekly, there are accidents at the intersection of Myrtle Beach Highway and three seventy. Several are fatal. It is a horrible, horrible highway. And if anyone has to walk there, they're doing it at their own risk. There have been people who are riding bikes along that highway who've been hit. It is a very bad highway. That Dollar General, um, unfortunately retail just, it's just not coming. It took thirty years for that Dollar General to get there, since I moved in. And there's just, so, there's just no room for the retail. They're not coming. And just please keep in mind, it is a dangerous highway. And if you have people who want to walk to the Dollar General, or even the convenience store beyond the Dollar General, they are putting themselves in grave danger. We have eighteen-wheelers on that truck, I'm sorry, on that road who speed. We have cars on that road who race. I stand there watching. It is a dangerous highway. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bateman.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Brenda Williams. Brenda Williams has been here in Sumter for forty-three years now. The years are rolling on. My husband and I are certainly very proud to be a part of Sumter, um, these men, people. Live and die right here, it's, it's, yeah. I wanna mention this, three short things. Number one, it is really important, council members, to dedicate yourselves to spending whatever amount of money it takes to deal with that seventy-six, three seventy-eight highway situation, where people have walked across the highway, ridden bicycles across the highway, and got killed. I think the last person was a nine-year-old boy who attended Willow Drive School across from the free clinic that my husband and I had. He tried to ride a bike across the highway that killed. So, I understand from attending a sweat season of Sumter urban transportation, a story. I think I have all that right. Um, attending that meeting, the ACOM engineers, highway engineers, have figured out three actual, um, plans for solving that problem. It's gonna take several years, and they estimate it's gonna take at least one seventy-two to about eighty-two million dollars to accomplish that goal. There is no dollar tag on a human life. So, I beg of you, on behalf of the family unit incorporated, five oh one Z three nonprofit charitable organization, please, please, that eighty-two, I think it's eighty-two million. Dollars is gonna be separated into three parts to be paid, that thirty-three million at one, uh, interval, and thirty-two million, and then another thirty-some million dollars. It might even end up being more than that. But please attend to that and get that, um, done. A plan to save lives of people trying to cross the highway, seventy-six, three seventy-eight, um, north pipe. Secondly, please, give whatever monies are needed to the RTA people, Regional Transportation Authority. They not only transport indigent people. RTA takes people from Shaw Airport space to festivities in towns, and it provides free riding services to other people who are quite affluent in this town. I personally have been in the RTA, was the first time I lived in, living in Sumter, um, and out to the, um, Irish festival. Very pleasant, um, thing. Lastly, please, please, do vote at least one tenth of the monies that flow through Sumter County to be in the population in this town. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Williams.
Excuse me, gentlemen, I'm gonna put on my hat, because I'm here as a member, former member of the United States Air Force. Uh, I served my country and county for over sixty-five years. That's twenty-seven years as a member of the United States Air Force. Twenty years with the Sumter Commission on alcohol and drug abuse. Many of those years, fifteen as the executive director. And twenty years on Sumter County Council. Six years as vice chair, two years as a chairman. So, I'm here, but what I'm more affected by is my service to my country. Every year, the veteran affairs officer come before and ask for help. Many of those veterans that she represents want to help, or people like me, and like Jonathan Brunton, who served and retired from the military. We had to leave our family, our wife, and our children to go to a foreign country and serve. When I left to go to Thailand during the Vietnam crisis, my daughter, this girl, was only three years old, and I had to leave it to go serve. And while I was there, I developed an illness. And as a result of that, I had to have triple bypass surgery. Many of those veterans that come before the veteran affairs officer also have those problems. I talked to them, and they're trying to get help. We owe them a debt. This council owed them a debt, because they were willing to make that ultimate sacrifice, to leave their wife, to leave their children, and to go serve their country. The least we can do is when they come before us, when they want to help, when they come and ask you. There shouldn't be no debate about whether they're getting it or not. This should be a This should be a slam dunk, yes. We shouldn't even debate this, because, like I said, those people gave their life, many of them. Even to this day, some of them don't, don't get help. Eighteen veterans commit suicide every day. That's over six thousand five hundred veterans a year that's committing suicide, because they are not getting the help that they need. So, when this Valerie Brunson come to you and say, "I need support. I need to be able to deal and get the people that I can process these paperwork that these veterans have, give them the help." That's the least we can do to show our gratitude for them who is willing to make a sacrifice to make sure that you didn't have to leave your wife and kids to go and serve this country. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Gilgor. Anyone else?
Yeah, the last one.
I never get to do this, I'm so excited. But first of all, let me thank God for all that he's already done for me, and to have the privilege to serve county council members. And I thank y'all for everything that y'all did on December seventeenth, and even, um, with me, with my family, on the death of my sister. But there's one person in here I really wanna thank. I really do thank council and everybody, but Ms. Lorraine Dennis. I wanna say that because if Lorraine didn't have the heart, and she does this not just for me, she does it for the community. But I will say that I know my daddy is just having fun in heaven, 'cause his name is in the, um, the, the national congressional book. And, and I don't mind saying this, my father was an excellent carpenter, and he did excellent work, but he only had a sixth-grade education. I'm so proud that Lorraine did something for my father that he could not do for himself. And I just really wanted to say that tonight, and especially to say that, thank you, council members, and working with, um, Sterling has been a joy. She's, she's eager to learn, and as Mother Mary, give her time, please.
Yep. Public comment is now closed. Move for a term. We should probably second it. We are done. Thank you, everyone.